I want to call the November ninth, two thousand twenty-one Regular Meeting of the Mono City Council Board. I'll ask you to stand for the pledge, followed by a moment of silence, and let's actually remember the two officers that are following in Henry County through, you know, actions and keep those people in your prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please receive. We have a force approval for minutes. I'm going to take it one by one. October twelfth, regular meeting minutes as written. Do I hear?
Uh huh.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Now we do attack this.
There's a motion on the floor.
She, um, there is. Um, she wants to amend the motion, which I think she had the right to do or to try to do. So it's here.
I make a motion to amend the motion to approve over the meeting minutes on October twelfth, the regular meeting minutes. The minutes did not reflect, um, before, did not reflect the four motion to amend the motion. And it's been requested to review by the city attorney and we have not gotten the legal advice. So the meeting minutes should be deferred until we get the legal advice on how to re-apply the motion to amend the motion.
So your amendment is to defer? Your amendment, but I'm saying what your amendment will be. I, I, George, you're asking for amendment. The amendment, basically, you're asking to defer amendments or you're asking to actually have verbers put into the amendments. So that would be exactly what I'm saying.
Well, you don't have idea.
Just go ahead.
I amend, well, should I stay on the motion or should I just clarify?
Tell them if you're comfortable. We're going to see if this has the motion just for.
Well, I read the motion.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion seconded to amend the amendment. All those in favor say aye. Raise your aye hand. Two members for, all opposed. Two members opposed, those in favor say aye. Going back to the original motion, we already have a motion that's already been properly seconded under the regular minutes for October twelfth as written. All those in favor, raise your aye hand. Two members for, all those opposed.
All opposed.
Time to approve motion carries. October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one Work Session Minutes. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
The discussion had not been opened before voting.
Okay. Open for discussion.
As I raised the concern during the work session, because we keep running into so much of incident, uh, the meeting minutes do not reflect and, uh, what, how the discussion go, accurately reflect how the motion go. Um, so I suggest that we should go back to voting then, to where every, the discussion will be written word by word. Um, so we won't have to run into this incident anymore. And that's why we give government transparency.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Motion is properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one Regular Meeting Minutes. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one Work Session Minutes. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Discussion. Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to start discussing on this one because, because there wasn't a quorum. So, and the city attorney advised that, uh, we did not have, um, if there was a quorum. So we did not have a quorum on October twenty-sixth. So should we have meeting minutes? But something actually not supposed to happen. Should we, before this, we get the city advice on how we do it correctly?
Let's just take that as, as stated, yeah. The argument would be that you did not have official action city, city minute, then no meeting minutes for October twenty-sixth are required by your own statement, correct?
I didn't get the city, so, um, attorney service and I requested last night, October twelfth, we do now. So I did not have a chance to understand clearly, uh, should we, whether have the meeting minutes or not. So...
But by your own statement, you're saying the meeting minutes aren't required. Correct?
I didn't say so. I'm saying that I don't understand the legal aspect. What should we do here? My suggestion is that we need to get the legal advice to direct us to do the right thing.
I'm going to agree with you in saying the meeting minutes aren't required. Uh, new business, item one, um, approval for cornerstone design. And I'll ask the city manager to verify that that is correct.
Of the minutes.
Approval of cornerstone design in conjunction with the previous approval for engineering from PFAU for small house engineering, provide mechanical electrical plumbing design in amount of six thousand four hundred dollars from SPOS two thousand fourteen, category facilities improvements, and authorized amendment by executing the documents and other related sections. As stated in Work Session briefly, uh, this was one of the missing agreements that was a requirement for that full engineering on that. So, um, do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Motion carries, yes. Approval for public works recommendation to purchase a two thousand eight Ford four-fifty replacement bucket truck from mid auto Dallas, given amount of forty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars from SPOS twenty-twenty, and to surplus the existing truck that we have, which is a two thousand four Ford F-four-fifty bucket truck, not authorized to execute any agreements and unrelated documents. Do I hear motion to approve? Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
The city has an open position for economic development director. The city manager has research, uh, and, uh, looking forward to have a brief discussion.
So, um, after interviewing eight people, um, for the position, I found the most valuable person would be Ms. Rochelle Dennis. Um, she is a local person. She has a pretty extensive marketing background and she's been involved in government. So she understands some of our government processes that we deal with. Um, she's been involved with me in funding, uh, opportunities. Uh, she's, uh, been able to bring in quite a bit of revenue into some of the places that she worked for. Uh, she's done a lot of process design and she has a good media background, uh, marketing outreach, uh, those types of situations. So, um, she is the most valuable candidate that I have, uh, had the opportunity to interview, and that would be my recommendation.
Discussion. Ms. Knight?
Uh, no discussion. Did have an opportunity to, uh, well, I think I might, did have an opportunity to talk to, uh, Mr. today, and I, I think where we are.
Ms. Dean?
Um, um, Ms. Dennis's resume is quite impressive. Um, I think that, um, she would be, uh, the type of individual that would be able to, um, start tomorrow and get the ground running. Um, she has experience that, um, I think we, right now, in our current situation is in dire need of, and I think that she, uh, will fit, um, that position, feel that position with no problems.
Ms. Qua? No comment. Ms. Tran?
I have a question about our practice here. Uh, since I started a job, every department had an interview by the council. The last position was Public Works Director. The council did not be noticed to be interviewed, uh, for the department head position. It's not me opposed to hiring or to any person personally. I'm just questioning on the practice here. What is our practice? And when I asked the mayor, um, the mayor stated that because due to the time restraint, then the mayor would only possibly interview, uh, the Public Works Director. And now we run into, um, this hiring. I would like to have a better understanding of what is the practice. I had a discussion with the city manager last week, and he said there was a policy, uh, we articulate that, how do we do that? And I have asked for the, um, policy, uh, so forward to me so I can read it and have a better understanding for myself. I still have not got that information yet.
That email was sent out Saturday, and it was also carbon copied there, including himself. Uh, having you seen, um, Mr. Moss, would you explain?
Yeah, the charter I sent out on Friday, last Friday, um, per your request. Um, you asked me for where it states at, and it's in the email that I sent to all mayor, council on Friday, stating the section and code numbers in the charter that says that the city manager recommends department heads and mayor and council will, uh, approve. And so that reference is in the email that I sent on Friday.
I read, um, this email, but thank you for the useful information.
Yeah.
And as far as I know, Jen, Ms. Dennis is your recommendation, correct?
Yes.
By the cops? Hearing none. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Motion carries. I look forward to seeing this case. Approval of staff recommendation to purchase residential key boxes from Knox up to the amount of nine thousand one hundred dollars from SPOS twenty-twenty, category public safety, unauthorized, and then executed. Those are stated before we get the fire chief, and because we might have some seniors in the audience, you might find this useful. It was just reiterating, you know, kind of what the option was and why it's, uh, you know, something.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, so this originally came out back in February when I had an opportunity to apply for a grant to pay for these boxes, and we were turned down on the grant last month. So last meeting, uh, Councilman Dean asked, you know, what the cost about, and I'm right, so I provided that information to you. And, uh, back a little bit, residential Knox boxes would be for our seniors or those that are disabled that can't get the door, uh, in a medical emergency. Sometimes a fire, but mainly medical emergencies, what we're looking to, uh, approach with this. So it kind of ties into our valid life program. I don't know if y'all are familiar with this or not, I know some of you are. Uh, so this is something we distribute to our seniors and those with medical disabilities. And they put all their pertinent information, prescriptions, doctors, emergency contacts, medical history in their refrigerator, and then there's a sticker that goes on the door that says valid life. So we know when we go in the house, open the refrigerator, and there says that, with all the medical information. So this kind of ties into that. Uh, it enhances our ability to get to the patient a lot faster than if we have to try to force a door, break open a window, plus the expense to the homeowner if we have to do those things to force entry. Uh, so this program would, um, you know, reduce the timeframe to get to a patient, uh, and reducing costs that may occur because of the damage we caused going in.
For, for the audience, you guys now explain what a Knox box is and how that works.
Sure. Um, the Knox box is a metal box. It's much more secure than what you would see like in a master lock box or something about a Humdeed or something. The Marfair Department has the sole key to that box. Um, nobody else can get into that box. The keys are carried on our fire trucks currently, and I'm asking in this proposal to buy two more key holder boxes to put on our ambulances, since this is targeted for medical emergencies. And the person in the ambulance of the fire truck has to enter a code to release that key. That's tracked. Anytime someone takes a key out, there's a certain code for that certain employee that says at this time of day, on this date, this person got the key out. So if there's any discrepancy or anything, we can pull records and see, okay, this key was pulled out by this employee on this date in time. Why? Okay, they went to such, such address on this medical call. So it all ties together. So there's no way to bypass the system, so to speak. The box would hang over the exterior door, so there's no way anybody can take it without opening the door. So it's right there. We get the key out of the truck, walk up, unlock it, and inside that box is a key to the hatch provided by the homeowner. So we make a quick entry into the house, uh, help the patient. Uh, these are frequently used in other areas, uh, when someone has the life alert bracelet, they fall and can't get up and that sort of thing. We get medical alarms a lot, and people can't come to the door. Some of our residents have hidden the key, and dispatch knows where that is, and they tell us, well, that's not a very safe practice at this point, because nobody's nowhere to look for getting keys as well. Uh, some people rely on a neighbor to be home when they may have a medical emergency. Say, hey, my neighbor's got the key, uh, the mayor, uh, the, sorry. The neighbor went to Walmart, they're not available. So now we're, now we gotta break the door down. Currently, all businesses in the city of Mar are required to have a commercial Knox box. And if you're ever out shopping anywhere in Mar, you'll see a black box used on the front of the building with a red reflective stripe on it. Our key currently fits those, and that has keys to businesses. Like wherever strip mall, we have one big box, and we can go in there. If there's a firearm going off at night, and we get there and see smoke or whatever, we can open that box, get the key out, and go in without damaging the door. So we already use the system on a commercial basis. This will just enhance our response to our residents. And this would be initially starting with thirty-five boxes. We don't know what the response is going to be. I think those will probably go out fairly quickly. And then at that point, it'll be up to all of us deciding, you know, if we want to fund more. But they're sold in lots of thirty. Uh, so their swing is about thirty, you get five in the charge, so the price comes down a little bit.
Any discussion? Ms. Knight?
No discussion.
Ms. Dean?
I do have one question. Um, the type of lock that's on the door, or, I mean, does it have to be a particular type of lock? You know, you can't use what you have now, or, say, for instance, you know, we have two locks.
Yeah, you can use it. It's just a key. You can have like a duplicate key.
For one hundred bucks. For...
So if you have a deadbolt, and they have two different, two keys should sit in the box, I think. Pretty sure that is.
Once you get them, just, uh, show us.
Sure.
For those who see them at times, I will be dealing for others that might not have seen them, please. True. Other questions? Ms. Qua?
End of discussion.
Ms. Tran? All right. Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Aye.
Motion carries, yes. I see it really. Um, first reading, um, of the normal amendment budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Um, and basically, this is for July one, twenty-twenty, ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, and you've had that before. There were a lot of different discussions. And I did, I did see something from Chris that said he was, um, he had the ability to be online, but somebody wasn't connected to the web app.
He's on the phone.
He's there.
He's on the phone.
Okay, well, then he's there.
Is that you on the phone?
I'm here.
Oh, perfect. All right. So, any, any discussions that we can ask the finance officer? Discussions in general. Ms. Knight?
Uh, none at this time.
Ms. Dean?
None.
Ms. Qua?
Hey, Chris.
Hello.
Hey, um, so, um, explain to us that, um, why do we need a minimum for this fiscal year budget?
Right. And, and that's, that's a very good question. You know, you know, the year's already passed. Why are we amending the budget now that the year's even over? Uh, and it really goes down to the fact that a governmental budget, uh, is different than what you see in the private sector, because a governmental budget is also a law ordinance adopted by council. So if you exceed the budget that's been adopted by council, you really want to go back and amend that budget so that you're not in violation of exceeding the budget. And it's very common practice, last ten years, I've never had a situation where I did not amend the city's budget after the year was over, simply because you have some revenues that, uh, or some expenses that are tied to revenues. And if revenues exceed the budget, then the expenses are going to have to exceed it too. Like hotel motel taxes, for example. You have to, you know, distribute, spend the money as you receive it. So it's, it's common practice, and it's really more of a formality than anything. You want to go back and capture any of the expenses so that you don't end up with a situation in the audit report where the, the auditor's saying you've exceeded your budget for a particular department during the year. Uh, this will capture all those expenses where we did go over budget, uh, for, for variety reasons that I've outlined in the memo, uh, so that we don't have that footnote disclosure in our audit report. Uh, couple examples that I had in there is the, uh, like the property taxes, for example. I mean, not property taxes, the property insurance. It was initially budgeted in the city manager's budget, but when we paid it, we paid it out of finance and administration's budget, uh, because of financial, uh, purpose, uh, insurances. So I reduced the city manager's budget by a certain amount, and then I increased the finance budget by a comparable amount to show that we, you know, we made that expense in a different department. Uh, in other cases, we had grant revenues that came in from the federal government and state government that we had to spend. Well, those were money that we didn't initially budget to spend. But when the revenues came in, we had to spend them out. So, you know, we increased the expenditures to account for those items that we'd spent. So you, you get a lot of those things during the year because we adopt the budget. Nobody has the crystal ball, and you don't know what's going to happen fifteen months down the road. So it's a common practice to amend the budget. In this case, we want to amend it so that we're not exceeding our budget in any of the departments. And I hope that makes sense.
So, got it. Um, so are we looking at to, I mean, we, um, are we right on it? Are we under, are we over the budget?
Well, uh, if you look at the exhibit A, that shows the departments that we're actually amending, and you'll see that we're increasing our budgeted revenues by about six hundred thousand, and we're also increasing our budget expenditures for about six hundred thousand in the general fund. So the additional revenues that we made, more of it took care of the additional expenses that we needed to, that we, or need the budget for at this time. So is your question, did we need to go into our savings and reserve to cover the additional expenses? The answer is no. Uh, if your question is, did we have to increase our overall expenditures in order to budget it, in order to stay with it budget? Then the answer is yes. And again, there's, there's several situations that I've outlined before, uh, like grant revenues and, uh, the, the good hotel motel numbers that we got last year, uh, for, you know, those good examples where we had to spend the money that we didn't initially anticipate spending.
Okay. Other questions? Ms. Tran?
Yes. My question is, where the, where is, if we have that practice that we spend before the budget amendment being made, with, when the budget's out, should the council be noticed on that when we're spending so the council can do their job as the budget governance? And that brought another concern is that the auditor have been here. May I ask if any council have been interviewed by the auditors?
Uh, and Mr. Mayor, I don't know if she's got a mask or just the distance from the phone, but could you repeat her question? Because I, I did not understand it very well.
Yes. Have any, uh, the council been interviewed by the auditors?
Yeah, I, I apologize. Maybe it's the phone connection. I just, I cannot understand your question. I do apologize.
Chris, let's see if we can do this. What, what her specific question was, did the auditors, when they came into the city, um, have any interviews with the city council itself?
No, the auditors typically, they will interview the mayor, uh, and that happens each year. As we get to the conclusion of the twenty-one audits, they'll have an interview again. Uh, but they'll typically interview the mayor, the city manager, the finance director, and then they may randomly identify certain staff that may be, uh, dealing with, with finances from time to time, like maybe FC, for example, or, uh, Han or Haley that may have dealt with, with finances on a regular basis for their job. They may randomly interview those people. Uh, but as a rule, they, they won't interview all of council.
And they should be interviewed the council, and our, um, government form is the city manager and, uh, council. And our mayor is the chief executive, which is, he is in the management side. Us, council, at the legislative side, and we are the budget governance. And we should, um, the auditor should have asked, um, the budget governance to see if any, there is any concern from the budget governance. So I had a chance to participate in the meeting with, um, the auditors, with the mayor for the fiscal year twenty. And I raised my concern of having the auditor look into one item. And I think lately I have requested that opinion as well. That is the right of three million dollars, uh, to have an audit, um, opinion. And I appreciate that you have gave us their opinion on that. But I would like to see the independent, the opinion from an independent party. We already have opinion from the city attorney. So I would like to have the auditor appear on that. And also, um, it appeared to me that, um, the city don't have a tracking of budgets in above twenty-five thousand dollars. And by the city, uh, budget policy, which is the city law, require the mayor, the council to uphold on the budgets. So my concern is that how, if we don't track that, how do we know that we in compliance?
Let me answer part of that question, because it insinuates a lot. We all know city management is taking, that the software we have does not do it. It just does not. Right? We didn't buy the software. The city's had it for ten years, twenty years, whatever it is. The city's had it for 10 years, 20 years, whatever it is. We know it's a problem. We are in the process of purchasing new software, which we've identified and that should solve the problem. Is that, is that correct, Chris? Software that we're working on, we're, we're headed in the right direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We, we can't make that up, right? We can shake the machine all we want to, the answer's not coming out and, and you're aware of that. That's not Chris's fault. That's not anyone that this council's fault. That's just the way the software is set up.
My concern for the auditor and please deliver it to the auditors, that I would like to have the auditor during the audit process look into the compliance of this specific city law. That budgets above $25,000 have to get approval from the council. And please relay my message of the concern as the budget governance to the auditors. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have more to say. And moving forward, the councils would like to have, could we have the one three report on the budgets above $25,000? We know that we have limitation of some certain thing, but we fix this as soon as we discover where the problem and move forward.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Chris, but we've got a, a version that we're going to be able to deliver to the members of the council, hard copy in your boxes on a monthly basis. And if I got this right, let's assume that right now it's November, almost middle of November, so October should have been reconciled and we would have it at least by the second council meeting on a consistent basis as soon as, as this argument goes over, or some of that effect. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes, that, that is 100% correct. And I would even add to that, that the September and October report is already completed. I've provided it to the city manager for distribution after his review. So you, you may have it at this point. I'm not sure what's in your box right now. He can verify whether or not it's been distributed or not, but it has been completed even for the month of October already.
It's in the middle folder.
Yeah, it's all.
So, so should we have, oh, did you write?
Yeah. Each of y'all have the folder.
And Chris, could I have the, the copy in Excel format? I'm sorry. Chris, could I have a copy of the file in Excel format instead of a Word copy?
Of the, of what you've asked, sure, I can send that to you.
Thank you.
What, what is the timeframe on our software, Chris?
Well, we, we went through the contracting process and I'm not sure if you remember, we finally got all the contract issues back and forth with legal review and everything completed. That was just done a couple of weeks ago and I sent that over to the software company. I got an email from them today saying that we should be scheduling the kickoff meeting at some point in the next three weeks. And I take that to mean that they're going to set the dates for the kickoff meeting in the next three weeks, not the actual meeting itself would happen. My, my timeline in an ideal utopian world, I would love to have our software up and running by the end of the fiscal year so that starting July 1 of 2022, we're using the new system. That's my goal.
So you do not have it, actually be carrying over the information or redo it or some type of translation in it?
Yeah, exactly. It's, they'll, they'll break in some of the historical data out of the existing software. It's imported into the new software. But for FY '22, the current fiscal year, our software record will remain the, the current software that the auditors will be auditing and the reports will come out of that software. That's not going to change any in the next six or seven months, but I'm hoping that by the beginning of next fiscal year, we're on that new software.
Questions?
And Chris, I have asked for the information, the comparison between the approved budget and the man budget by my items. You said you don't have that information, but you have the information by the department. So please forward it to me and share among, among the council member for that. So we, we have a...
That's not actually correct. You asked for the line item, actual, the budget comparison in Excel format and I emailed that to you already and I copied the rest of the council on it as well.
That, that information will not really match with the amended budget right here that the mayor has suggested. So could we get a report of the approved budget in the amendment about right there? Or what am I, what you approve, what, what is the view of that? What's the approved amount?
Um, no, the, the software would not have the amended budget in it yet because it wouldn't be entered until after council approves the budget. So there's not going to be a report out of the system that shows the original unamended budget because there's not an amended budget yet. And since it's after the end of the year, I probably wouldn't go through the exercise of entering, getting to the system anyhow. I, I might just because historical comparisons, but we're leaving the system anyway. I'm not sure what good it would do to retroactively go back and enter that. So your, your solution would be the budget that's on the Excel spreadsheet that I gave you already to look at that total by department and then add or subtract the dollar amount to sit here budget to find out what the amended amount would be.
Could you get that report for me instead of me doing all the work?
At the direction of the city manager, I could take time away from other responsibilities and do that for you if he so directs me to do so.
Comments from the audience? Today night savings time, y'all look a little sick back there.
We haven't recovered yet.
No comments from the audience, comments from the council? Comments, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Trent, go ahead.
Well, this is my applause to Jeff Moss, the city manager interim. Recently, he held a training for department heads on the budgeting policy that we never had a coaching program to help employees to do their job. And because of that, it's, I think it's very benefit the city, the employee. And when the employee understand what they need to do, and they will do the job and that will benefit for the taxpayers. So because of that, thank you, Jeff. And I also heard that he said he would try to continue to have coaching program for the staff. That's a good job. Thank you.
I, I have no comments. What, what good one? I mentioned it earlier, you know, the, the issues that happened handling accounting to police officers there, you know, it, it's not really sad, you know, but a lot of those families, you know, that could easily be lost one day. So just remember, just because it's not like right in your backyard doesn't mean it's not important and we certainly feel for those families. And you did, after, and they could, I mean, they could, yeah. I like to feel bad for my comment, but the, you know, and the other ones, just remember the, the veterans on Thursday, look forward to seeing y'all there. And then we'll have some discussions for just work session, I think, and some, at some point, most of what happens, but meeting, chat, whatever.